All right. You all hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you all for being here for this reorganization and regular board meeting for the Leon County Board of County Commissioners. At this time, I would like to recognize or invite Pastor Patrick Karen from Pisgah Methodist Church to come to the podium and deliver our invocation. Pastor Karen joined Pisgah Church on April 1st, 2025, fairly recently. He and his wife Lisa have quickly become an important part of the community. He leads both the contemporary and traditional services. We got what, 9:30 and 11?
That's correct.
Okay. And has brought a strong, steady leadership to such a historic congregation. I had the privilege of visiting Pisgah Church two or three Sundays ago and listening to Pastor Karen's sermon. If you guys are unaware, Pisgah Church is one of our most significant historical structures, really, in the county, one of our oldest structures. And they just opened a new fellowship hall after many years of fundraising. And I had the privilege of delivering a proclamation to the congregation a couple of weeks ago. So, thank you for being here, Pastor Karen. And if you all wouldn't mind, please standing for the invocation.
Before I pray, I just want to tell you how deeply honored I was at the proclamation that you all bestowed upon our church for 200 years of history. And it meant the world to us. And thank you so much, Chairman Welch, for coming in person and sharing that with us. It meant the world. Would you pray with me? Almighty and ever-present God, we give you thanks on this day for the opportunity you grant to this gathering of public servants who come together in our shared county of Leon. We ask your guiding hand upon each member of the board, on the leadership they assume today, and on the work they undertake throughout the year ahead. Grant to them wisdom that is rooted in humility, strength that is tempered by compassion, and courage to serve the common good, protecting the rights of all citizens, especially those whose voices are too often unheard. May they embrace the responsibility of stewardship of our shared resources, our natural environment, our neighborhoods, and our civic trust. As they take turns in leadership and pursue the reorganization of this body, may this transition be marked by civility, mutual respect, and renewed commitment to working together across differences for the welfare of every resident of this county. Bless the staff and citizens who support this work, the agencies and volunteers who partner for good, and the community-minded institutions which stand as witnesses to enduring faith, tradition, and hope. May their example inspire this body and this community to greater acts of service. Finally, we pray for protection over this region, the homes and families of Leon County, the children learning in our schools, the elderly who pave the way, the poor and vulnerable, and that through the decisions made here, we might take one more step toward becoming a unified, thriving county of compassion, fairness, and opportunity. We ask all of this in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen. Well, now, say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Karen. We appreciate you being here so much, sir. Thank you. Before we move on, I wanted to welcome the Clerk of Courts, Gwen Marshall-Night, who will be conducting our reorganization vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for being here. And we also have some other dignitaries present. Former State Senator Bill Montford, we saw earlier. Thank you for being here, Senator Montford. Leon County School Board Member Darrell Jones, I saw here, looking excellent as always. Thank you all for being here. We sincerely appreciate you joining us for today's important occasion. All right. At this point in time, we would like to present our Year of Service pins. Let's see. I think we're gonna, I'm gonna have the Vice Chair join me at the podium, and then I will do the others. All right. Oh, Commissioner Cummings as well. Will you join us at the podium? And Commissioner Maddox?
Commissioner Maddox.
Oh, not here yet. Okay, all right. All right.
Commissioners, as we begin to recognize our colleagues for their years of exceptional service to our great community, I am pleased to present the recognition for our current Chairman, Brian Welch. Chairman Welch, thank you for all that you've done the last five years serving our community. In the past years, Chair especially, we appreciate your leadership. I present to you this pin recognizing your five years of service to Leon County. We'd like to say a few words.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All right. This is great. Thank you all so much. You know, I wasn't sure when I got elected in 2020 that I would make it to the fifth year. But hey, good fortune has shined upon me, and here I am. So, thank you to the board and to the organization for allowing me the privilege to be here. It is a tremendous honor. And although I don't know if I'll make it to the 10, or the 15, or the 20, or the 30, Commissioner Proctor, I'm certain about that one. I'm certain I won't make it to the 30. But it is a tremendous honor. So, thank you all so very much for this recognition. Thank you. All right. So, now, I get the privilege of presenting the five-year pin to my colleague from the class of 2020 on the Leon County Commission, our queen, our wonderful, our wonderful dais mother, Commissioner Carolyn Cummings. Congratulations. We've made it this far. It has been an honor to come in with you to this organization and serve alongside you. You have represented our community so well. And you kind of put me to shame because you're just so darn graceful and elegant and good at what you do. And I'm up there just looking like a thumb. So, thank you, Commissioner Cummings, and congratulations on five years with Leon County Government.
Thank you, my Chairman, Commissioner Welch. We share a lot in common. We're both from Mississippi, and he's just been a gracious Chair. But to the county, county administrator, all my fellow commissioners, and all of you whom I've had the pleasure of serving for the last five years. It's certainly been an honor for me to sit on the dais and represent the interests of the citizens of Leon County. Thank you for the confidence that you placed at me. Thank you for supporting me. And I promise for the next three years, I will always put the interests of the citizens of Leon County first. Thank you. God bless you.
All right. And we got one more, but we might have to call an audible.
Mr. Chair, we're gonna circle back to Commissioner Maddox's years of service pin later in the meeting.
Okay, all right. So, we are calling an audible. We'll be back on that one. Okay. All right. Now, Vice Chairman Caban, I think, is gonna take over. Yes. Sorry. I would like to turn it over to Vice Chairman Caban as we move into the next section of our ceremony, before we circle back to Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But you know, before we continue the meeting, I have the distinct privilege of recognizing our Chairman for his Year of Chairmanship. And I want to begin my remarks by saying what a pleasure it's been to serve as your Vice Chairman throughout this last year. I really mean that. We've had a lot of, we've had a lot of good times, had a lot of good conversations, a lot of good arguments on this dais. And alongside our county administrator and our county attorney, I really do believe you have set such a high standard for leadership and insight through exciting celebrations and also challenging issues. Your representation of this board and this role has been exceptional. Your leadership has set an example, not only for this board, but for all the future and current leaders in Leon County. For all this and more, it's my honor to present this gavel plaque to commemorate your service as Chairman from 2024 to 2025. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for all your hard work.
And we're not, we're not done. We're not done. I also, my aide Ally and I took the privilege to get a little gag gift for the Chairman. Early this year, on the record, Chairman Welch was called a wanker. So, we got him a cup commemorating that as well. Commissioner Wanker. Oh, man. All right. I forgot about that. Now, I'll never forget about that.
I would now like to recognize our county administrator for a few remarks. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Chairman. In keeping with longstanding tradition here at the county, it's my privilege to present you a collage that captures many of the events in this very busy year that we've had with you at the helm as our Chairman. And so, let the record reflect that it wasn't me or any of the county employees that called you that. But on their behalf, again, I'm very proud to present to you this collage. I hope you will think back on your year as Chair fondly, as fondly as we will. You'll see this collage captures many of the events from this year, from Operation. Thank you to our World Cross Country Athletics Championship kickoff, and many, many more. And we've even included, yes, thank you, the very picture. That one can be removed. But, but, Mr. Chairman, again, we hope, again, on behalf of all the men and women of Leon County, proud to present this to you. And thank you for being so accessible to us this year. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. That's awesome. We got your good side, long. All right, Mary. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, did you want to get up? Anything? You good?
No, I think we're good.
All right. Thank you, Vince, and thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All right. I think it's my turn to talk. I've got some notes. I'm not gonna go off these notes. All right. Well, you know, look, I tell people all the time, it's challenging to find good pictures of me because I always look relatively angry in my photos. I can't help it. It's just the way I look. I mean, you got all range of emotions here, including this great bear costume that our ward or employee awards every day, which I hope to add. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'll try to be brief. I'll be as brief as I can. I just want to make a few points. First and foremost, I want to start with all the thank yous. Start with my wife and kids who are not here. But even though they're not here in the, in the chamber with me, they're obviously with me in spirit. I couldn't do any of this without the support of an incredible wife and some incredible children who are completely unimpressed with my station in life. So, Chairman, not Chairman, they just don't care. I'd like to think they're proud of me, but you know, we live a busy life. So, I wanted to thank them. I'm obviously very proud of them. And you guys know that my family is the most important thing to me in the whole world. And you can't do this kind of work without the support of a system like that. And so, Kim, kids, thank you for letting me do this. Okay. My constituents, obviously, we are put in this position by a group of people who give us a tremendous amount of trust, and in many cases, a tremendous amount of grace. And I want my constituents to know, just like all of us, I know, we work really hard to make you proud of us, to earn your trust, and put your, make sure that your faith that you put in us is well-deserved. And that's at the forefront of everything I do every day. Commissioners, you know, we, I couldn't do this without your grace, without your trust, and without your permission. And I think that's one of the things that makes our, our organization great. I think that's what makes our structure great, is that we, we're a collegial body, and we rotate the chairmanship every year. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for giving me this privilege, this opportunity. I know that at times I may have seemed a little too efficient, but you know, I just, I want us to, I want us to be as considerate as possible, maybe sometimes over-considerate. So, thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity. To the Administrator and the County Attorney, obviously, this takes a lot of your, test your patience, having to deal with all of us, and certainly with the Chair. So, thank you for being patient with me, giving me the opportunity to do this, and being available to me whenever I had weird questions at strange hours. Shout out to my aide, Kyle Frost. Kyle, you know, helps me keep this thing running on time, keep the trains running, and, and deal with a lot of different, you know, priorities and stuff. And so, obviously, being Chair adds a layer to that. So, thank you, Kyle, for, for standing in the gaps when we necessarily couldn't be there. And then, on a special note, thank you to our Leon County staff, the folks who are out working every day, wearing that logo, representing that motto of people-focused and performance-driven. I had the opportunity to speak at our Employee Awards breakfast last week and relayed this sentiment to them as best I could. But, you know, the heartbeat of this organization are the employees who work here day in and day out. A lot of us on this dais, you know, or most of us on this dais are temporarily here, with the exception of Commissioner Proctor. And so, you know, to, for our employees out there, both our administrative staff, our office heads, and the folks out in the field doing the work, I want to offer you a sincere thank you. I, I probably don't know all of you, but if I ever run into you, I hope you mention to me, you know, hey, I work for Leon County Government, because you hold the utmost respect in my heart. I am just very privileged to be a part of your organization. So, thank you to all of our employees. They really are the best in this business. I mean, I can't imagine a better civic, a better run, and better-performing civic organization or service-facing organization. All right. So, for me, just on, and real quickly, you know, I never thought I'd be in this position as an elected official, much less as the Chairman of such a distinguished organization. I grew up poor, you know, low expectations. If you'd have known 14-year-old me, you probably wouldn't have thought I'd have malleted too much. Single mom, you know, apartment complex, the whole thing, Mississippi. And so, you know, to think that I moved to Tallahassee in 1997, literally the day after I graduated high school, and within 23 years was able to get elected to the Leon County Commission, and now in 2025 to serve as the Chairman, I don't think anyone would have expected that out of me. And so, I consider myself extremely lucky, as I think we all probably do, or should. We're very fortunate to be in these positions. You know, if it weren't for the tenacity of a single mother and the commitment of a support system, I would have never made it. And then, certainly, that has transcended into my family life. And so, again, I reflect on that. I look, I tell my son, who's 14, my youngest now is 14, and I tell him, you know, leadership is about service. It's about a commitment to other people. That's how you lead. It's not a cliche. It's a real thing, right? You have to be willing to give of yourself to, to make your world better, to make your life, to make other people's lives better. And so, my motto, from a, from a daily perspective, for me, I've got a little, I've got a little sign in my office that a friend gave me, and it's just help people. So, if I can wake up every day and just help people, that's what drives me to do this job. So, as I reflect on this year, I think that it's been remarkably unremarkable. And that is, I think, kind of like me. I try to be remarkably unremarkable. I really mean that. I just try to be steady Eddie, normal. I think that persistency is the key to success. I'm a marathoner more than a sprinter in terms of life and work and how I approach things. We've navigated some complicated issues up here over the last year. Fortunately, no natural disasters yet. But, you know, we'll let Commissioner Caban deal with that. The fire services issue obviously has been one that tested us. And I think this board has handled that issue with an incredible amount of grace, and patience, and deference, and pragmatism. And so, I want to commend you all on that. I am honored, again, to serve with you all. I think that we set a great example for anybody that's watching about how a collegial board should function. We do not have personal back-and-forths. We are a professional group of people who I really feel like has a genuine respect and kindness towards one another. And so, I just want to thank you all for that. It's humbling to be able to serve amongst you. And I think I'm gonna look back on this experience in my life and, and be sort of awestruck with the individuals that I got to serve with, each of you holding sort of a special skill set and a special place in my heart. I'm trying to skip through some of this, y'all. I'm sorry. So, basically, in closing, I think that, you know, it's in, it's important for us, and I don't have any grand statement, right, but in closing, I think that it's important for a board to not be vengeful, to not be vindictive, to not be, to look at the bigger picture, not be petty. And I think if you look at the bigger picture for why we get to do, why we do what we do, it's about, if you just focus on helping people and serving others, there's gonna be times where we say things that we don't like, that hit us crossways. But that doesn't bother us, right? At the end of the day, we know why we're here. And so, I just want to say, again, thank you to the board. Thank you to the community for giving me this opportunity. And thank you all for being really just incredible individuals, incredible staff, incredible people. It's been the honor of my lifetime to serve alongside you and to lead you over the past year. Thank you.
Commissioners, I do want to open up the floor if any other...
Hold on one second. Well, go ahead, go ahead.
We're gonna come back to that.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna do your thing. Yeah, yeah.
Commissioners, I do want to open up the floor if any Commissioners would like to give any remarks to Chairman. Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Chairman Welch, I just want to congratulate you on such a successful year in your tenure as Chair of this organization. You have just patiently allowed us to speak on the issues. Many of us speak two or three times. Many of us say the same thing two or three times at our meetings, but you allow us to do it. You've allowed us to, just to liberate on the important issues. And I think the liberation is important, is an important part of what we, as Commissioners, do. You've shown leadership in so many significant ways, and I honor you for that. Last week, you showed us another side of you at the Employees Appreciation Breakfast when you dressed out in your, in your bear suit. So, I think you've shown us the humorous side of you as well. And you've demonstrated versatility in your personality and in your person. You're intelligent. You love your students at Charles High School, and you love the citizens of Leon County. And you have a special affection for the citizens in your district. So, I respect you for that. Thank you for paving the way for our next chairperson, who will have some big shoes to fill. But I think you've certainly done a remarkable job in leading this organization the last year. Congratulations. Love you much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Chair, I know you like it brief, so I will keep my comments brief. Not for lack of appreciation, but because I know that's how you like it. I appreciate you being an excellent Chair this year. A year, as you mentioned, we've covered a lot of issues. And we've covered a lot of important issues with long debates that I think, and a lot of issues that cross over with other entities where you've represented us well, as our Chair communicating with other entities. And so, I appreciate your leadership on that. And I appreciate, like you said, we all may not agree among each other, but we come back together as a team, representing people. And you've done an excellent job going from issue to issue to issue, to contentious issue to contentious issue, keeping us on track, keeping the issue the issue. And so, I thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Congrats on a great year, Mr. Chairman. You've been a, you've been a good Chair, highly efficient. I think, I didn't realize how similar running a high school class might be to running a county commission meeting, but I think there's probably a lot of similarity.
Yes.
Because you definitely fit into the groove and did it really well. Lot of lively debate during this last year. I think I had some lively debate with you.
Sure.
This last year. But that's just how it works. That's how the job is. And I respect you very highly. You know, the chairmanship, running this meeting is harder than it looks. And you don't really know how hard it is until you do it. And so, what Chairman Welch does so well is make it look pretty easy. And so, I don't want people to dismiss just how good he is at what he does because it looks so easy for him. It actually is quite difficult to juggle these seven cats to herd, in addition to trying to speak intelligently on the issues that we're debating. So, Mr. Chairman, good job, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, as the, what was that title you gave me? The Forever Commissioner?
The Goat.
I appreciate that. But I really want to, tonight, to nominate County Com- But I really want to, tonight, to nominate County Commissioner, Leon County Superintendent and North Florida's Senator, Bill Monford, as the forever ex-officio Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. And I think that his resume and length, as well as quality of service, far exceeds, far exceeds my own. Thank you, Mr. Monford, our colleague for many years, whose labor and works we stand. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you have exceeded expectations. I didn't know what a po boy from Mississippi was going to do as the Chairman of Leon County, but you have absolutely been a statesman. You have been very, very patient as Commissioner. Your homegirl has said, Commissioner Cummings, and you allow all of us to just talk way too long, and especially Commissioner Minor, I mean just much-- Your patience with him just proved that you must be a Christian or something like that. And you've been marvelous. We share a commonality of both being civics instructors, and I don't know what you're getting out of your classes, but I can tell you my classes don't pay much of attention to me, and I know that you're a much better teacher. And I want to make a commitment to you that, in front of all these people, that all the things I admire about you, but I must say, and it seems like I might just be compelled to do so, but I don't want to go to your barber. I'm trying to avoid your barber as much as I can, and when I do have to go to your barber, I'm going to leave the county commission.
I'm my own barber, Commissioner Proctor. I can take care of it, man.
I see.
I can take care of you.
But God bless you. You've done a marvelous job, and we're looking forward to your continued presence here on this dais.
Thank you.
Mr. Maddox.
Mr. Chair, single mother from Mississippi raised you and taught you enough for you to be the Chairman of the Leon County Commission. It's pretty huge. I would like to say that my daughter, Miley, came to me and she said, "Dad, are you a celebrity?" I was like, "No, not a celebrity." She said, "What people at school think you are." And it made me think about you. You are the most human of all of us to the young kids in Leon County because you stand before they can teach them. You give them something to look at, they can feel and touch to say, "I can do that one day." You carry yourself in a way that just is humble, doesn't recognize what you've accomplished thus far in your life. I mean, you've beat the odds time and time again to be up here on this dais, and then to run our meetings the way you have run them with efficiency, but also grace when needed. It's nothing short of spectacular. So, you are everything I wanted to be as a young Commissioner. You're a statesman, you're a gentleman, you know how to conduct yourself in crowds, you actually, like I said, are a role model to so many kids who get to be taught by you, and you're admired by your colleagues. So, I look forward to what you'll do in the future, but I thank you for the way you led us this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I omitted another compliment for Commissioner Welch. Ladies and gentlemen, you should know that it takes a long time to secure certain levels of projects for one's district, but y'all need to know that Commissioner Welch came and asked for $18 million off the blueprint table. And those of us who've been around like Commissioner Maddox, you know, we didn't talk about it, but we knew that couldn't know a rookie stepped on the table. How dare, what kind of nerves. But I need to tell you all that Commissioner Welch had the unmitigated gall to ask for $18 million for a project in his district, and he was very upset, but I need to tell you that, to this day, I admire that two-thirds of that ask, he actually got $12 million to support a project in his district, and that I have not recognized ever occurring. And when you got that $12 million, I said, "He's a real political player, and he's going to be a bad boy." And my respect for this Commissioner, effectuating that result, has always gained my respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, again, just another big thanks on behalf of all the men and women of Leon County for being such a great supporter of county employees. You're like, you're like my third favorite Welch in the whole family, so again--
Makes sense.
Big thanks. Thanks most of all for keeping the natural disasters away--
Yes.
--this year. Can't thank you enough for that. And again, you've been a pleasure to work with from the day you walked in the door, and certainly your year as Chair was no exception, so I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, Commissioners, I'll close it out about comments about our Chairman. And, you know, as a Vice Chair and Chair, I saw very quickly that it takes communication, right? Mr. Chair, can't attend this event, can you cover for me and vice versa, you know, especially when there's so much stuff going on in the community. But, you know, not to get personal here, but, you know, one thing that wasn't mentioned, and I think Commissioner Welch has set such a great example, not only for men across the community, but I know for me personally, was every time I talked to him, or every time we were communicating, he was always doing something with his kids. And that is something for me, Mr. Chair, as a new father, that is humbling, because no matter how busy you may have been, you were always putting your family first. And so, I think that's something that is really a testament to the person you are and a leader.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, that is all you.
Thank you all so much. I can't tell you how much those comments mean to me truly, really and truly. It means the world to me to hear those things from people I respect so much, so thank you so much. All right, at this time, I think we're going to, we're going to start our reorganization. I think I'd like to invite the clerk, yes, the clerk of the Circuit Court, Clerk Marshall, to come to the dais for the reorganization.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney, and citizens of Leon County. I'm Gwen Marshall Knight, Leon County Clerk of Court and Comptroller. I have the distinct honor of conducting the elections for the reorganization of the Board through elections for the 2025-26 Chairman and Vice Chairman of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners. So, with that being said, I would like to open the floor for nominations for Chairman.
Madam Chair.
You recognize, Mr.--
Yes, Madam Chair, I nominate Commissioner Christian Caban as our next Chair of the Leon County Commission.
I'll second. We have a motion for Chairman, for Commissioner Caban, and a second, any other nominations. Hearing none, we close the floor. Any opposed? Hearing none, congratulations, Commissioner Caban, for your election as Chairman. Now, I'd like to call for nominations for Vice Chairman, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner O'Keefe as our new Vice Chair.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, any opposed? Hearing none, congratulations, Commissioner O'Keefe. Now, I'd like to recognize the Honorable Bill Monford, if you would like to join us at the lectern for this wearing in. And Commissioner Caban, would you like to call your family and friends?
Thank you, Clerk Knight, and thank you, Chairman Caban, for this opportunity. If I may take just a moment of special privilege, I would like to thank the county commissioners, the administrator and the staff for setting a really good example for local governments throughout this state. I hesitate to even say you can disagree in a nice way. I would prefer to say you can have different views on an issue and still treat each other with respect and dignity. So, I say again, as a citizen of this community that I love dearly, thank you for setting a good example for local governments throughout this state in the face of, quite frankly, unprecedented challenges to local government. With that being said, Christian, excuse me, Chairman Caban, would you please state the following? I state your full name--
I, Christian Caban.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
--that I will well and faithfully execute the duties--
That I will well and faithfully execute the duties.
--of the Office of Chairman of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners--
Of the Office of the Board of the Leon County Commissioners.
To the best of my duty, to the best of my ability--
To the best of my ability.
--so help me God.
So help, so help me God.
It's my honor to recognize you as Chairman.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. No, before I get started, I do want to just give a big congratulations to my incoming classmate, Commissioner O'Keefe. You know, we got elected together, and it's going to be a really fun year, and I'm honored to have you as my Vice Chairman, and I'm looking forward to the things that we're going to accomplish this year. Next, I would like to give a handful of some sincere thank yous. Commissioners, first and foremost, there's no greater honor than having the trust and confidence of our colleagues to help lead this body and represent residents across the county, and so, I really mean it sincerely. I'm grateful for each and every one of you. Next, Alex, you know, thank you. She's back there probably with Colt. And by the way, guys, like, there's nothing worse than having your four-month-old up there steal the show when you're getting elected as Chairman. But, you know, Alex, I appreciate you being the best mom and to Colt, and, you know, without you, it really would be impossible to do this job, you know, efficiently, and so, I appreciate all you do for our family. And next, where's Ally at? I know, I'll just keep this one short and sweet. I have the best commission aide. I'm sorry, Chauncey, I mean, I don't even think you're second, you know, I think you might be third. I think Rochelle's, Rochelle's got you on that, but no, Ally really does hold it down, and, you know, with so much going on in life, and Ally really does take this job as a 24/7 job, representing our constituents, not only in the district but across the county. And then, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our Leon County staff and, you know, management and our County Administrator, our County Attorney. I sincerely appreciate the professionalism and commitment that you have to serving our community. You guys do that with integrity, and I think that's something that speaks volumes. Lastly, and arguably the most importantly, where are my District Two residents? I know we have some of them in the building, and I just want to say thank you for continuing to put your trust in me. Being your Commissioner and serving, you know, you all is one of the greatest honors of my life, and I appreciate, and I know there's a handful of you, I see you guys in the crowd right now. Thank you for taking the time on a Tuesday to be here. Commissioners, over the past few years, I think it's, we can say that we've overcome some obstacles together. We've had several hurricanes, a record flooding event, the May 10 tornadoes which caused more damage than any storm in Leon County history. We've stood together through our ongoing dispute with the city over the fire services fee, and now we're in the midst of approving a new comprehensive plan that will guide our community for the next 100 years. We've also taken on some heavily debated issues: blueprint, homelessness, legislative priorities, that list goes on. And through all of it, one thing has remained constant, and I think this is something for us to be proud of, is we did it together. And, you know, when this gavel hits, and I'm sure it'll hit several times this year, no matter where the conversation went, no matter how heated things got, no matter how mad we are at Commissioner Proctor--
Yes, sir.
--we really do walk out here friendly, collegial, and focused on the bigger picture. I really do believe in political times today, that's something for us to be extremely proud of. I say all this because I truly do believe that this board operates as a leading body in our community, and I want us not only to maintain that, but I want us to build on it. I want us to build to continue strengthening our community's resiliency. I want us to build to expand opportunities in every part of the county. I want us to build to govern with transparency, accountability, and with respect, not just for one another, but for everyone who comes through these chambers. Lastly, Commissioners, as your Chairman, my goal is not just to lead our commission, but my goal is to support it, and I mean that sincerely. I want to support each of you in achieving real tangible results in our districts, whether you're a District Commissioner or you're one of our two-at-large commissioners. Commissioner Proctor--
Yes, sir.
--I want to support your efforts to expand Crawfordville Road. Commissioner Minor, I want to help advocate for funding along North Monroe Corridor. Commissioner O'Keefe, I want to work with you to improve pedestrian safety and accessibility. Commissioner Cummings, our Queen of the County Commission, I'm here to support your efforts to protect women and children in our community. And Commissioner Maddox, I want to help strengthen our work to build more affordable housing across the county. Commissioner Welch, I want to continue supporting your commitment to advocating for common-sense policy across the county and in your district. And I want each of you to know that I see this role truly as a partnership, one where I help create the space on this dais for every Commissioner to succeed, because I mean that sincerely, that when one of us achieves progress in our districts, the entire county benefits. And Commissioners, in closing, I'll say this: Through good times, bad times, hard times, my commitment is to stand beside each of you, to uplift our priorities, to make sure that together, we deliver real, meaningful results for the people that we serve in our community. I want us to lead with strength, I want us to govern with purpose, and I want us to continue to be the example of what happens when a body works together to show our community what can be done. I'm honored to serve with each and every one of you, and I'm proud to stand with you. I'm ready for this year ahead, and I'll tell you this, I can promise this, this year, we're going to get a lot of things done, so thank you all so much. All right, so I think now, are we going to do it? Commissioner Maddox? Let's do it. All right. We're going to, real quick, before we take a recess, we are going to recognize Commissioner Maddox for 15 years of service.
Yes. We weren't able to do this a little earlier, Commissioner Maddox. Oh, you want to go? Come on, man, come on.
All right, thank you and congratulations, Mr. Chairman. I couldn't let it go without doing this, Commissioner Maddox. You know, Commissioner Maddox, 15 years, man. I mean, it's remarkable, it's unbelievable, it's all those things, but I have a special affinity for Commissioner Maddox. Even though technically I'm older than you, I feel like your little brother up here on this dais, and I could not miss the opportunity to present you with your 15-year pin as it fell on my chairmanship to do that. And so, Commissioner Maddox, you are an incredible leader. You conduct yourself on this dais in a way that I aspire to conduct myself. And I know I've told you this, and I've said it in public, but I really honestly do look up to you. I think you are an incredible professional. You show unbelievable calm, unbelievable charisma on the dais. You're never emotional, it's never personal, and those are the things that I aspire to, right? I want us to be like you. And so, you set a great example for us for what it means to truly be a public servant and a statesman in all those terms, and so I don't want to like overstate it to the point that it doesn't have meaning. You really are an incredible leader, incredible mentor to me. I know the chairman looks at you the same way, Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Cummings, all of us, along with Commissioner Proctor, who's been here a long time, but he still, he still, he may not admit it, but he still looks up to you because of the way you conduct yourself. You are a role model, not just for this dais, not just for other elected officials in our community, but really other elected officials all over the state. So, thank you, congratulations on 15 years. I hope you get 15 more. I hope you beat Proctor and maybe go 40. I don't know, but it is an honor of a lifetime to get to serve with you, specifically Commissioner Maddox. Congratulations.
I actually, believe it or not, I was laid on purpose, so I wouldn't have to do this, but I want to thank the chairman for your kind words, really. I didn't expect to be here much like you. You know, it's one of those things that just, if it happens for you, it happens for you. So, I try my best to serve in a way that my mother and the kid I was would be proud of. I've tried to be an example when I could, though an imperfect man, I've tried to handle my affairs as far as this commission is concerned, being fair and not too emotional about the things that I've had to decide on. I want to thank each and every one of you for the kind words that you said about me. I was actually texting Commissioner, former Commissioner Marian Lindley a second ago. As I told her, one of the greatest memories I'll ever have was presenting her with my 10-year pin. I was going to ask her what she did with it, but I didn't get a chance to before Brian told me he wanted to do this. But really, this has been a ride. Former teammate of mine over there, Angelo Crowell, we go back to high school, an All-Star game together, and I tell people all the time, being up here is not much different than being an athlete. Every week, we get a big playbook that we call an agenda. We look through that playbook, we figure out how to go, and we go at it. Not everybody's going to like what you do, not everybody's going to love you, but if you put your all into it, and you try your best, and you lead considering the team, you'll be okay. So, for those who one day aspire to do this, I would say that if you're doing it to be elected, don't do it. If you're doing it to be elected, don't do it. If you're doing it to be important, don't do it. But if there's a fire that burns inside of you that wants to do something for somebody else who is not even yourself, that's the reason to do it. Whether it be a neighbor, for me, it was the mother I had and the kid that I was, whether it be a teammate that you played with, maybe it's a friend, but let the love you have for someone else drive you to stand before the public and ask them to put you in a position to make decisions that are going to affect people's lives. Again, thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve.
All right, commissioners, everyone, we're going to close out with a closing prayer, then we'll have a recess, and I would like to recognize a good friend of mine, Bishop Quincy Griffin, senior.
Mr. Chairman, point of information, are we taking the picture immediately?
We'll take the picture immediately after.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, the floor is yours.
Please stand for the dedication. Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for such an awesome occasion. Lord, we all felt your presence in here, but more importantly, we feel the unity from the county commissioners. We ask that you bless them because of this unity with the heart to continue to serve the people, the strength and the courage to make stands and to break records and make history for our county. We know the vision is being released, so this can be one of the greatest years we've ever seen before. Lord, we bind the spirit of fear, give them courage, give them faith, and give them a sound mind. Now, Lord, as we leave this place and never your presence, we ask that you bless us, keep us, and guide us, and even bless the food and the refreshments that people will receive. It's in your son Jesus' name we pray. Let everybody say amen.
Amen.
All right, commissioners, we will recess till 4:15.
There we go. Stay in for the picture. Yeah, we stay in.
The meeting into order at 4:19 PM. Okay, great. So we'll first recognize Commissioner Welch for a proclamation recognizing the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 13 and 14 U baseball teams as World Series Champions. Commissioner Welch, you are recognized.
All right. Hey, I've got another one. Am I gonna go next? I can't remember where that is.
You can do back to back.
Okay. All right. Am I hot? All right, guys, come on up here. All right, Commissioners and guests, thank you for this opportunity to present a proclamation. This is just some of the contingent from our 13 U and 14 U Tallahassee Babe Ruth All-Star Teams which both won their mutual World Series, right, in would have been August. Is that right, Coach? August, yeah. So, you know, the Babe Ruth program's run through our Leon County parks, great partnership that we have with them, and both our 13 and 14-year-old, 14 U boys went to, where did the 14 U went to Arkansas? And the 13 U went to New York? Jamestown, New York, and they both won World Series, right? I mean, that's the best in the country at Babe Ruth at that age. So we were gonna give them a proclamation, and it reads as follows, and we got some parents here, too. Shout out to my parents over here that show, there are Madam Public Defender over there being one of them. Whereas, oh, oh, sorry, I'm getting into the whereas is Madam Defender. Whereas Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth Baseball has for more than 60 years provided advanced level youth baseball for players aged 13 through 15, promoting skill development, discipline, sportsmanship, and community pride throughout Leon County. And whereas the program has built one of the strongest traditions in the nation, producing multiple Babe Ruth World Series titles and appearances and serving as a pillar of youth athletics in the Big Bend. And whereas in the summer of 2025, the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 14 U All-Star Team captured the 2025 Babe Ruth 14-year-old World Series Championship in Hot Springs, Arkansas, defeating Mexico, Mexico, nine to two in the title game at Majestic Park and completing a dominant tournament run. And whereas the same summer, the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 13 U All-Star Team won the 2025 Babe Ruth 13-year-old World Series Championship in Jamestown, New York, defeating Stamford, Connecticut, 13 to five at Dietrich Park to secure the program's fourth 13 U World Series. Whereas 2025 marks an incredible achievement for Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth as both the 13 and 14 U teams won World Series titles in the same year, further cementing Leon County's reputation as one of the premier youth baseball communities in the United States. And whereas these championships reflect the exceptional dedication of the players, the leadership of the coaches and league volunteers, the support of parents and families, and the longstanding community backing from Leon County local sponsors and the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth Alumni Foundation. And whereas the accomplishments of the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 2025 World Series Champion Teams bring honor to Leon County and stand as a source of inspiration for young athletes throughout our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida that we celebrate and recognize the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 2025 13 U and 14 U World Series Champions Teams and congratulate them for extraordinary achievements and outstanding representation of Leon County dated this 18th day of November, 2025, signed by myself as past chairman, as well as the rest of the county commission attested to by the county administrator. Let me just tell you guys before we give them a round of applause, I have watched most of these young guys play baseball since they were seven years old, and they are absolutely elite-level players, and we are certainly proud of them. They represent our community extremely well. I have, I have some of these go to my, go to the school where I teach, one of them's in my class, and they are all just as good in the classroom as they are on the baseball field. So we're super proud of you guys, thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause. All right. Who's your spokesperson? Cosper? Come on, man. No? Coach?
Commissioner Welch, thank you. Administrators of the county, thank you very much for having us here. We're a group of young men that never shut up. All we had to do was mention speaking, and they all clammed up immediately. We did have one that was afraid he might say a cuss word, but I won't say his name. So we'd like to thank Commissioner Welch and Leon County. It was a super special run. No possible way we could have made it without our parents, which were huge supporters the whole way. These are fabulous young men, from the beginning to end. We had a great summer. Actually, both teams looked undefeated, which is basically unheard of in the All-Star League. And they're good quality young men, and it was my pleasure. So thank you very much, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, we're gonna take a picture, guys. Come over here. Commissioner Cummings, you're recognized.
Oh, yes. Coach?
Yes, ma'am.
Team members, just want you to know that we are extremely proud of you all. You don't just become champion, world champions in your particular sport just by sitting around. We know that you guys put in a lot of hard work, and we are so proud of the fact that you all are representing us. You're representing Leon County, you're representing Tallahassee, and you guys have done it very well. So thank you so much and congratulations again.
Mr. Maddox?
Yeah, real quick, I'm sorry. Coach? Team, you know, being a champion myself, you know, these types of things don't happen without hard work. But it's not the hard work that you put in day after day during the season, it's actually the hard work you put in in the preseason. It's everything you did over the year to get prepared for the games that you'll have during the season. And so don't think it be, it's lost on me, the countless hours that you put in, the hard work that you put in, I don't know if y'all got any things like madras or anything like that, but the blood, sweat, and tears that you put in to be national champions. I played AAU and all that good stuff when I was, when I was your age. I couldn't hit a baseball to save my life, I tried. But I will tell you that I know how hard it is, not just to win in the States, but to go internationally and win is pretty extraordinary, and that's something that you'll take front, with you for the rest of your life. Last thing I'll say, Mr. Chair, is that the guys that you sat next to, you'll remember this moment forever. I remember the kids that I traveled with to Des Moines, Iowa, on my AAU basketball team. I remember the kids that I traveled with to Vegas to play in my AAU basketball team. And I'm not talking about just one team, I'm talking about all of them. We all went to different schools, and we all led different lives from now, from, from the time that we graduated high school, one of which actually passed not too long ago of cancer, and I took the time to leave Tallahassee, go back to Carolina, to be a part of his services because he was my teammate, not in high school, not in, in, in college, but AAU teammate. And so you guys will forever be friends, you'll forever have this bond, you'll forever have the moments that you had when you played in this, in the game to win the championship and throughout the season. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Parker?
Mr. Sherman, thank you. Team, congratulations. I heard the accolades coming from my colleagues in the back. A few years ago, I was asked what, what was my takeaway? What did I learn in playing championship football in high school at Florida M. University High School? And as a quarterback, I was able to say that I think the thing that I've learned the most is eighth grade, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade, is that when you get knocked down, you get up off the ground, you go back to the huddle, you regroup and call the next play, and each down you fight to win.
The meeting into order at 4:19 PM. Mr. County Administrator, I think we go right into awards and presentations, right? Because we already in vacation. Okay, great. So we'll first recognize Commissioner Welch for a proclamation recognizing the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 13 and 14 U baseball teams as World Series champions. Commissioner Welch, you are recognized.
All right. Hey, I've got another one. Am I gonna go next? I can't remember where that.
You can do back to back.
Okay. All right. Am I hot? All right, guys. Come on up here. All right. Commissioners and guests, thank you for this opportunity to present a proclamation. This is just some of the contingent from our 13 U and 14 U Tallahassee Babe Ruth All-Star teams, which both won their mutual World Series, right? In would have been August. Is that right, Coach? August, yeah. So, you know, the Babe Ruth program's run through our Leon County parks. Great partnership that we have with them. And both our 13 and 14-year-old, 14 U boys went to, where did the 14 U went to? Arkansas? And the 13 U went to New York. Jamestown, New York. And they both won World Series, right? I mean, that's the best in the country at Babe Ruth at that age. So we were gonna give them a proclamation. And it reads as follows. And we got some parents here, too. Shout out to my parents over here that show, there are Madam Public Defender over there being one of them. Whereas, oh, oh, sorry, I'm in, I'm getting into the whereas is Madam Defender. Whereas Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth baseball has for more than 60 years provided advanced level youth baseball for players aged 13 through 15, promoting skill development, discipline, sportsmanship, and community pride throughout Leon County. And whereas the program has built one of the strongest traditions in the nation, producing multiple Babe Ruth World Series titles and appearances and serving as a pillar of youth athletics in the Big Bend. And whereas in the summer of 2025, the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 14 U All-Star team captured the 2025 Babe Ruth 14-year-old World Series championship in Hot Springs, Arkansas, defeating Mexico, Mexico, nine to two in the title game at Majestic Park and completing a dominant tournament run. And whereas the same summer, the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 13 U All-Star team won the 2025 Babe Ruth 13-year-old World Series championship in Jamestown, New York, defeating Stamford, Connecticut, 13 to five at Dietrich Park to secure the program's fourth 13 U World Series. Whereas 2025 marks an incredible achievement for Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth as both the 13 and 14 U teams won World Series titles in the same year, further cementing Leon County's reputation as one of the premier youth baseball communities in the United States. And whereas these championships reflect the exceptional dedication of the players, the leadership of the coaches and league volunteers, the support of parents and families, and the longstanding community backing from Leon County local sponsors and the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth Alumni Foundation. And whereas the accomplishments of the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 2025 World Series champion teams bring honor to Leon County and stand as a source of inspiration for young athletes throughout our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we celebrate and recognize the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 2025 13 U and 14 U World Series champions teams and congratulate them for extraordinary achievements and outstanding representation of Leon County dated this 18th day of November, 2025, signed by myself as past chairman, as well as the rest of the county commission attested to by the county administrator. Let me just tell you guys before we give them a round of applause, I have watched most of these young guys play baseball since they were seven years old, and they are absolutely elite-level players, and we are certainly proud of them. They represent our community extremely well. I have, I have some of these go to my, go to the school where I teach. One of them's in my class, and they are all just as good in the classroom as they are on the baseball field. So we're super proud of you guys. Thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause. All right. Who's your spokesperson? Cosper? Come on, man. No? Coach?
Commissioner Welch, thank you. Administrators of the county, thank you very much for having us here. We're a group of young men that never shut up. All we had to do was mention speaking, and they all clammed up immediately. We did have one that was afraid he might say a cuss word, but I won't say his name. So we'd like to thank Commissioner Welch and the Leon County. It was a super special run. No possible way we could have made it without our parents, which were huge supporters the whole way. These are fabulous young men from the beginning to end. We had a great summer. Actually, both teams looked undefeated, which is basically unheard of in the All-Star. And they're good quality young men. It was my pleasure. So thank you very much, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, we're gonna take a picture, guys. Come over here. Commissioner Cummings, you're recognized.
Oh, yes. Coach?
Yes, ma'am.
Team members, just want you to know that we are extremely proud of you all. You don't just become champion, world champions in your particular sport just by sitting around. We know that you guys put in a lot of hard work, and we are so proud of the fact that you all are representing us. You're representing Leon County. You're representing Tallahassee, and you guys have done it very well. So thank you so much and congratulations again.
Mr. Maddox?
Yeah, real quick, I'm, I'm sorry. Coach? Team, you know, being a champion myself. You know, these types of things don't happen without hard work. But it's not the hard work that you put in day after day during the season. It's actually the hard work you put in, in the preseason. It's everything you did over the year to get prepared for the games that you'll have during the season. And so don't think it be, it's lost on me, the countless hours that you put in, the hard work that you put in. I don't know if y'all got any things like madras or anything like that, but the blood, sweat, and tears that you put in to be national champions. I played AAU and all of this stuff when I was, when I was your age. I couldn't hit a baseball to save my life. I tried. But I will tell you that I know how hard it is, not just to win in the States, but to go internationally and win is pretty extraordinary. And there's something that you'll take front, with you for the rest of your life. Last thing I'll say, Mr. Chair, is that the guys that you sat next to, you'll, you'll remember this moment forever. I remember the kids that I traveled with to Des Moines, Iowa, on my AAU basketball team. I remember the kids that I traveled with to Vegas to play in my AAU basketball team. And I'm not talking about just one team. I'm talking about all of them. We all went to different schools, and we all led different lives from now, from, from the time that we graduated high school, one of which actually passed not too long ago of cancer. And I took the time to leave Tallahassee, go back to Carolina, to be a part of his services because he was my teammate, not in high school, not in, in, in college, but AAU teammate. And so you guys will forever be friends. You'll forever have this bond. You'll forever have the moments that you had when you played in this, in the game to win the championship and throughout the season. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Team, congratulations. I heard the accolades coming from my colleagues in the back. A few years ago, I was asked, what, what was my takeaway? What did I learn in playing championship football in high school at Florida M. University High School? And as a quarterback, I was able to say that I think the thing that I've learned the most is eighth grade, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade, is that when you get knocked down, you get up off the ground, you go back to the huddle, you regroup and call the next play. And each down, you fight to win. And if you've learned the discipline, the trust of teammates, and that stuff, that somewhere down the road in life, you're gonna reach in, and it's gonna be there because of what you've galvanized, those qualities that you gained this year as a champion. So rely on it, trust it, and God be the glory. We thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Welch, you are recognized for the proclamation recognizing November as National Hospice Month.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would the folks from the hospice and palliative care, thank you, how are you? Thank you for being here. All right, commissioners, I've got one more proclamation. I don't know if you're aware, but November's National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. So whereas November is National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, first recognized nationally to honor providers of compassionate end-of-life care and to increase public understanding of hospice and palliative options for individuals with serious and life-limiting illnesses. And whereas Big Bend Hospice Incorporated, founded on April 1st, 1983, as the first nonprofit hospice in Tallahassee, was envisioned by local volunteers as a compassionate response to the needs of individuals with life-limiting illnesses, offering comfort, dignity, and emotional support to patients, families, and those grieving the loss of a loved one. And whereas for more than four decades, Big Bend Hospice has proudly served patients and families across the eight county Big Bend region, Leon, Franklin, Gadsden, Jefferson, Liberty, Madison, Taylor, and Waukulla Counties, delivering 13,650 patient care days this year and continuing to bring comfort, dignity, and compassion to countless individuals and families throughout the region. And whereas Big Bend Hospice maintains accreditation through the Community Health Accreditation Partnership, demonstrating its adherence to nationally-recognized standards of quality, safety, and performance in hospice and palliative services. And whereas Big Bend Hospice employs an interdisciplinary team, including skilled nurses, physicians, social workers, chaplains, music therapists, and trained volunteers to address not only physical symptoms, but also the emotional, social, and spiritual needs of patients and caregivers. And whereas Big Bend Hospice provides inpatient and respite services in respectful, home-like environments, including the Margaret Z. Dozier Hospice House, the First Commerce Center for Compassionate Care at Tallahassee Memorial Health Care, and an inpatient unit at the Leon County Detention Center, thereby ensuring access for some of the community's most vulnerable residents. And whereas Big Bend Hospice extends care beyond traditional hospice through music therapy, pet therapy, specialized veteran services, community bereavement programs, and spiritual care, all provided at no cost to local families through community support and foundation resources. And whereas Big Bend Hospice also furnishes palliative care for individuals with serious diagnoses who are not yet hospice-eligible, helping patients and families navigate treatment, relieve symptoms, and plan for future care. And whereas embodying its guiding promise, quote, "care that surrounds you, support that sustains you, and hope that follows you home," Big Bend Hospice continues to strengthen the quality of life and end-of-life safety net for Leon County and the Big Bend region. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, does hereby designate November 2025 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month in Leon County and dedicates this observance to the Big Bend Hospice for more than 40 years of compassionate, community-based service dated this 18th day of November, 2025, signed and attested to by all the commissioners, as well as the chairman. Thank you all so much. And before we, before we give them a round of applause, I do think it's important that we recognize that, you know, our hospice care and our palliative care, end-of-life care is something that touches us all. We've all probably had experiences with Big Bend Hospice, and so I just wanna thank you for what you provide for our community. It's incredibly important. It brings comfort to people in a terrible time, and it is really a crucial organization in Leon County. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch, Welch, and all the other Leon County commissioners. My name's Amanda Gustafson, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Big Bend Hospice. And I just wanna thank you for this proclamation because it allows us to spread the word about hospice and palliative care and ensure that everybody in Leon County and North Florida have care, comfort, comfort, and support at that end-of-life period. So thank you.
Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner O'Keefe.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commissioners, I have bragged on Big Bend Hospice. I've bragged on them out of experience. And 2021, they were there for my family and I, as my father took exit steps to transition. I thanked you then, and I've said publicly that to county administrator before, that our county commission should lift and do all that we can to amplify services of Big Bend Hospice. And I think that it's much too unknown still to that large public. And mine is a request of us to place this excellent agency on the radar, place it in a new orbit of, and to put more shine on their services. And I don't think emotion is appropriate at this time, but Big Bend Hospice is there for families. Might I also extend condolences to the family of late Deacon Marcellus Long, Mrs. Richard Bell Long, Marcellus, Vanessa, and Cynthia, who've experienced last week the loss of Ms. Long, my neighbors, and countless families have benefited from y'all. And I think commissioners, we need to do more to undergird and to lift all of that. Now, Ms. Cromarty is sitting there like she don't talk much and is shy, but prior to one of our persons that we recognize tonight, Ms. Brenda Williams, her mother was a director, executive director of the Tallahassee Housing Authority, Ms. Claudette Cromarty, and did an excellent job of years and years of service. So we're looking at people who, whose roots and legacies expand across the community. So when you put a great team together, it's not surprising that you get the results that we crow about and celebrate. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Keefe.
I'd just like to say thank you. When my father passed away last year, it was in Jacksonville, a different hospice, but the comfort that was given to us by the hospice nurse and all the support, it's just an incredible value. And I think it's hard to understand the value of what you do until you go through it with yourself or a family member. And so I just wanna say thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna be a proclamation recognizing Angelo and Kim Crowell for their efforts in raising $35,000 for First T Tallahassee. I'm gonna present this proclamation, then I'm gonna say a few, few words. who own and operate dozens of Jersey Mike's Subs, restaurants across Alabama, Georgia, and Florida, have demonstrated exceptional generosity and community spirit through their fundraising efforts for a local nonprofit, First T Tallahassee. And whereas each March, Jersey Mike's hosts its nationwide Month of Giving campaign, now in its 15th year, inviting customers to support local charities and culminating in a Day of Giving, when 100% of all sales are donated to local partner nonprofit organizations. And whereas First T is a national youth development organization that empowers kids and teens through the game of golf, teaching life lessons and core values such as honesty, respect, confidence, and perseverance, with more than 150 chapters nationwide, creating pathways for children to thrive both on and off the course. And whereas in March 2025, Kim and Angelo led their Jersey Mike's locations in a remarkable fundraising effort resulting in a $30,000, $36,000 donation to First T Tallahassee. And whereas through their leadership and unwavering commitment, Angelo and Kim inspired their community to rally behind a mission that builds confidence, integrity, and life skills in local youth. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that Angelo and Kimberly Crowell are formally recognized for their outstanding philanthropic leadership, not only for their generous contribution, but also for the example they set as compassionate and engaged business leaders dedicated to empowering youth and strengthening the fabric of our community. Their steadfast commitment to service, mentorship, and long-term investment in local programs has created lasting opportunities for the next generation and continues to inspire others to lead with purpose. Dated this 18th day of November, 2025, signed by the Board of County Commissioners and attested by the county administrator. Thank you. I just wanna say that this, this proclamation is a little personal to me because it's not every day that you get to present a proclamation to, to, to people who have been a mentor to me personally since I was about 19 years old. And so, you know, this, this does not surprise me just through the, the how many years, 14 years, that we've gotten to know each other from when I was in college. You know, Angelo has been such a mentor to me on a personal and a professional level. And so I do owe a lot of credit to my, my philanthropic, my public service, and also my, my, my business knowledge to Angelo and Kim. So I'm really honored to present this to y'all today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings.
Chairman Caban, thank you so much. This is truly an honor. Thank you to the commissioners. We weren't prepared to speak today, but thank you for this recognition. This really isn't about Angelo or myself. It's really about the community and, and the public that we serve, and we're just the vessels. So thank you for this, for this proclamation. We'll take it back to our teams because we couldn't do it without them. I appreciate it. And thank you to Austin for coming.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. and Mrs. Crowell, I just want to say that you guys are just a great, great example of goodness in our community. We appreciate you all for all your philanthropy. We thank you for your generosity. We thank you for your entrepreneurship. It's just all around. And in the heart of that is public service. You've got a heart for public service. So thank you for the fact that you raised such an enormous amount of money in support of our youth, in support of our community. So we congratulate you. Keep up the good work, and, and we see you've got your son just right there, training him along to be a great public servant as well. So thank you all, and congratulations on the proclamation.
Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you. Long way from Virginia. Y'all may not know, but this, this couple met at UVA, been together ever since. You know, I think what you also may not know is they come from good families. Kim, Austin, Darryl Austin, Crowells would be very proud of what you're doing. Not the fact that you, you chose to invest in something that was gonna be lucrative for your family and build generational wealth, but the fact that you're taking some of that and you're putting it back into the community is what I think they'd be most proud of. And to be able to bring Austin here and have them see, have him see you do this type of thing for the community, that means that he'll take the same example, and he'll do it for generations to come. And so I, I love you guys. I'm proud of what you're doing. I look forward to you doing many more things. Austin, man, hang in there. I saw you work out this morning. Your dad's gonna try to kill you, but it's okay. It's gonna be good. It's gonna promise he's gonna help you in the future. But seriously, I, I really, really appreciate what you guys have done for this community and what you continue to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, I've been trying to get a, a Jersey Mike's down in District 1.
It's okay.
I don't know what I got to do.
I was gonna say the same thing, but in District 4. Come on now.
Well, if I can get four votes on this, maybe we can, you know.
Maybe we can force this action.
Something. Y'all, don't forget us. We eat Jersey Mike's, and we just hate that we got to catch the bus and come so far. You know, and we'll look around, and it's a couple people we can just, you know, need to evict and let y'all take over their space. But certainly Brother Darryl Jones can attest, since my initial years serving as, as the youth minister at Beaufort AMI Church here in Tallahassee, believing, beginning in 1985, I've seen since Crowell grow up, literally grow up. And with great parents, a father, the former director of the Tallahassee Airport, Ken Austin, city, city assistant city manager, a mother, highest ranks of Florida's state education. Just someone said it, the family, the family generates, creates, impores into, and it doesn't surprise me, her success. When you get a good man and a, and a great woman together, and Brother Crowell is quiet, consistent, persistent, and they're, got a family model, they have a business model, and they have a, a community model, that if you check them closely, in all three fronts, it's tight and right. We respect what you're doing, much success in your continued efforts to be the family, be the business, and be the community powerhouses that you're growing into. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Welch?
Hey, just real briefly, Commissioner Proctor stole my thunder, but like, you'd virtually assure my reelection if you could get a Jersey Mike's in Brafterville. I mean that sincerely. No, thank you guys so much for all you do for our community. You are a great example of entrepreneurship and commitment and giving back to Leon County. And aside from the fact that your restaurants are delicious and you're building like a little empire, that's awesome. But I mean, like, sincerely, you guys are clearly great people and do a lot for our community. So thank you so much. Please continue to do what you do, including maybe putting us a, a Jersey Mike's in Brafterville, man, come on.
Don't do it. Come to the South Side first.
Now we have recognized Chairman Caban, to recognize Sable Palm Elementary School for receiving an A rating.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd like to ask school board member Darryl Jones to please come up and help me present this proclamation. Whereas Sable Palm Elementary School, home of the Patriots, has achieved a remarkable academic turnaround, rising from a D to an A in the 2024-2025 school year. If there was not applause, I was gonna ask for one. So great time for school board member Darryl Jones, one of only five schools statewide to make such a monumental improvement in a single year. Whereas, under the leadership of Principal Hankerson, Sable Palm Elementary set a bold standard of excellence, challenging teachers and staff to give 120% each day and to believe, as she does, that children can do anything. Whereas, through tireless effort and data-driven teaching, Sable Palm educators held weekly meetings to track student growth, taught with real-world applications, and devoted evenings and weekends to tutoring, ensuring that every student had the opportunity to succeed. Whereas, Sable Palm Elementary Whereas, Sable Palm Elementary, as Tallahassee's first UCF-certified community partnership school, provides wraparound services including healthcare, mentorship, arts, athletics, and essential resources, ensuring all students have the tools they need to thrive. And whereas, this achievement reflects the unwavering support of school board member Darrell Jones, superintendent Rocky Hannah, the faculty, staff, volunteers, families, community partners, who have invested in the success of Sable Palm students. Whereas, the school's success is a testament to the power of unity, where teachers, parents, volunteers, and partners came together to uplift a Title I community and prove that every child, regardless of circumstance, can achieve excellence when given the belief and resources to do so. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we recognize Sable Palm Elementary School for its outstanding academic achievement and exemplary contributions to the community, and extend a sincere heartfelt congratulations to Principal Hankerson, the faculty, staff, students, and community partners on this remarkable accomplishment. Dated this 18th day of November, 2025, signed by the Board of County Commissioners and attested by the county administrator. Let's give them a round of applause. And I'm gonna pass it to Principal Hankerson, so I'm gonna put you on the spot, and school board member Darrell Jones. But I just want to say this, that on our back-to-school bash that we had this year, Principal Hankerson was out there, blood, sweat, and tears, in a hot, humid, you know, Friday afternoon, you know, just sweating, greeting all the parents. And I saw firsthand just how Principal Hankerson, you know pretty much every family, every single person that came through that car line, they knew you, they felt comfortable. And I think it's those kind of relationships that make lasting impacts on our schools. So, thank you so much.
I didn't expect to speak, but I just want to thank Christian, Commissioner, Chairman, Commissioner Caban at this point, and all the commissioners. Also, my superintendent is not present, but I definitely have to recognize him and my school board member, who I could not do without. So, I want to thank, I am such a crybaby, my gosh. Okay, so, I am the shining principal at Sable Palm Elementary Community Partnership School, and with me, I just have just a few of, it's not about Principal Hankerson, right? It's about the faculty and staff that's here, and I say that all the time. So, with me, I have one of my fourth grade teachers, I have Mr. Sellers, I have my academic coach, Ms. Davis, I have Ms. Santane, my fourth grade teacher, Ms. Barnes, my third grade teacher, Mr. Sailor, my fifth grade, and Ms. Arnold, my third. I don't take it lightly that we actually achieved this A. The only thing I asked for us to, one, right, I only had one, I just, all I needed you to do is teach. The babies deserve nothing less, but I would do all the rest. I just needed you to teach. And when I tell you I have the hardest-working faculty and staff, and Ms. Hare may say differently, because her faculty's the hardest-working faculty and staff, but I don't take them, I would do anything in the world for them, because I know that they will give 120%, because they know I tell them, I need you to keep everything out the door. And when you walk in, you give those babies 120% every day, because I give 150% to them every day. And so, as we walk that journey, as my first year as a principal, walk the journey, all I needed them to do is teach, and I needed to work alongside them. So, they believed in my vision, they worked hard, the students worked hard, and we plan to run it back for the '25-'26 school year. So, again, I thank you. I think part of this is just a speckle of my faculty and staff, and we have, it's, this is 20 years in the making. This is 20 years that Sable Palm has been an A. So, this is truly an honor, and I thank you again for this proclamation, and we will take it back home, and we will put it up so all can see what Sable Palm Elementary's all about.
Mr. Vice Chair, if we can, we have two proclamations for the schools, so let's do all the commissioner discussion after we present both proclamations.
What if we like one school more than the other? All right, please, as you wish, Mr. Chair.
Let's start the school.
Whereas, Rutiger Elementary School, home of the Roadrunners, has demonstrated extraordinary commitment to student achievement, rising from a C to an A in the 2024-2025 school year. The school's first A in 17 years. You may applaud. I had to beat Darrell to it. Whereas, more than 68% of Rutiger students come from low-income homes. And whereas, under the leadership of Principal Shannon Hare, Rutiger Elementary adopted the theme "Raising the Bar," inspired by the 2024 Olympic spirit, encouraging students and teachers alike to strive for excellence and exceed expectations. And whereas, Principal Hare and her dedicated faculty embraced a culture of high standards and belief in every student's potential, leading a transformative year where teachers and students alike committed to aiming higher and achieving more. Whereas, through innovation and inclusivity, Rutiger Elementary dismantled traditional barriers by implementing inclusive classrooms empowering students with disabilities to thrive, raising their English assessment score from 16% to 27%, scoring Level III or higher. Whereas, this achievement reflects the unwavering support of school board member Darrell Jones, superintendent Rocky Hannah, the faculty, staff, volunteers, families, and community partners, who have invested in the success of Rutiger students. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we recognize Rutiger Elementary School for its outstanding academic achievement and exemplary contributions to the community, and extend heartfelt congratulations to Principal Shannon Hare, the faculty, staff, students, and community partners on this remarkable accomplishment. Dated this 18th day of November, 2025, signed by the Board of County Commissioners and attested by the county administrator.
Thank you, Commissioner and Mr. Jones. Shout out to our board member, Marcus Nicholas, who's not here this evening, but is always supportive of Rutiger. And y'all have to stop putting me in the room with Hankerson. She is public speaker. Put me in front of 515 kids, I'm good. A room full of grownups, not so much. But we really do appreciate it. I've been serving Title I schools for 18 years. So, for me, it is a calling and is a passion. Most people don't know, because I don't like to talk about myself, but it's deeply personal. As a teenage mom, I decided I wanted different for my child, and that began with me getting an education. So, I'm gonna brag for one second, a mom brag, and then my school. That child that inspired me and changed the trajectory of my life is now a business owner, a successful business owner in Tallahassee. My son, who came along 10 years later, just started his career with the Tallahassee Police Department, both products of the Leon County School Board. So, mission accomplished, I changed the cycle. So, that drives me every day for what I do. And I tell our kids often, smartest kid I know, I can't believe you did that. That's unbelievable. And they'll look at me, and one of the things I always say is, I'm gonna say it until you believe it. And that's what our faculty and our staff does every day. I wanted to bring a whole crew, but I saw 3 o'clock, and in my mind, that's the middle of dismissal. And I was already stressed about not being at car pickup. So, I did bring a couple. I have my partner, our assistant principal, Melissa Sumner, with me, and you better get on up, girl. I have Nicole Jackson, a reading interventionist, who was very critical in raising the bar and inspiring teachers, because teachers need to hear it from other teachers, not just from me. And then I am gonna give a shout out. My son popped in in the back. Super proud of him. I'll be in trouble for that later, but I cannot wait to go back and share this with our faculty and staff. I truly, along with Ms. Hankerson, I too work with the best teachers and staff, but also our students showed up and showed out, and our parents and families supported our efforts. And I also appreciate you mentioning inclusion. We made a big shift to inclusion a few years back, and that has been a number-one priority for me. And I also want to say one more thing, along with the inclusion, we do have a dedicated, gifted, and talented program, because Title I kids do not need just remediation, okay? We've got the future walk-in our halls every single day. So, we hit both ends of that. We will never be defined by our zip code. More great things to come for Rutiger. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Welsh.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, not to belabor this point, but as someone who works in a public school and has for 19 years, and I've said this before, 20 years ago, I worked in the governor's office, and we mentored students at Sable Palm. That's where I first walked into a school in that role as a adult, young adult, working in that capacity. And that experience at Sable Palm as a mentor, weekly, led me to want to get out of the governor's office and go be a teacher, okay? And so, I just want to emphasize to everybody listening in the audience how transcendent what you have accomplished is. It is remarkably difficult to do what these two schools have done, and the challenges that they face are incredible. And to be able to achieve what you have achieved, you cannot understate the just nature of that. And you talk about reading interventionists and staff members and teachers, that is an incredibly heavy lift, and you should be so proud. Teachers, educators, administrators, you know, you go to bed with a knot in your stomach when you're a teacher. You never leave it. You never leave it. I don't leave it like ever, okay? I mean, I'm thinking about students that I had interactions with today, right now, and how I'm gonna like deal with that tomorrow and rectify that and try to give them some semblance of closure on an issue or whatever. You never, it never leaves you. And so, I just want us to know that, I want the community to know that, what you have done at your two schools is unbelievable, and this community should lift you up as absolute queens of Leon County. And your staffs should be given, we should give you a million dollars each a year, you know? It's unbelievable, but it is, it just can't be understated. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart, as someone who is right there with you in the trenches every day. You guys are unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, school board member Darrell Jones would like to say a few words.
Chairman.
Not like to, I've been asked to, but I would like to say that these extraordinary leaders are indicative of what happens when principals love first and lead second. And in our Title I schools, many of you, as you are very much aware, some, back in 2018, when I was first elected, the schools in my district were Ds and Fs. However, it has been the intentionality of my colleagues on the school board and our superintendent Rocky Hannah, my colleagues on the school board, who've been intentional about making the necessary investments, and extraordinary leaders like this, making sure that they were equipped and empowered to lead their respective campuses. But it's not lost on me, as I stand before this dais about how it does take more than just a village, it takes an entire county to raise a child. It's not lost on me today that in this meeting, you have lifted up soft-foot baseball teams and philanthropists who have supported First T, and you've lifted up these principals. And this commission would create a Children's Services Council that would subsequently be intentional about making investments in children's support organizations. It has been this commission that through its policy has been intentional about ensuring the safety of our children as they walk back and forth to school by making the necessary investments in sidewalks and lit school bus stations and making certain that my littlest ones out at Fort Braden, when it is dark at night and time goes back, those children don't have to stand in the dark to wait for a school bus. So, it takes an entire county. And here now, with your intentionality and the intentionality of this community, we see the fruits of our labor found in this enormous accomplishments of these great leaders, and they're not the only ones. Here now, most recently, Pine View was an A last year. Bond missed being an A by a couple of points, them's the same. But again, it is an entire county investing in our children that has certainly made the difference. And for these great leaders and for all of you, we are most grateful and honored to stand here on behalf of all of my colleagues and our superintendent of schools. Thank you. Thank you, Bobby. Mr. Chairman, I was thinking, as school board member Jones was speaking, he's been attacked in recent weeks strongly. But in a seven-year span, you will be hard-pressed to find the transformation of a singular district in the state of Florida, where grades have climbed exponentially to new heights of grandeur. Those schools which missed being As were all in the single digits of not being A schools. I have never seen a single school board member have the transformational impact that school board member Darrell Jones has had here in Leon County. And though many have come for him, but to examine the track record of the performance of schools in his district, since he has been the district representative, speaks loudly to his leadership, his fatherhood, his, he's the superintendent of our South Side Schools. He is our superintendent, de facto. And I would say to Ms. Hankerson, I've been a little absent from y'all's campus and whatnot, but I can explain it. Christian Caban and Darrell Jones are jealous-hearted. They're just jealous, and they get, you know, that's Christian's district, and you know, he did the school giveaway out there, and he won't let nobody out love on y'all. So, I just don't want to get in no, huh? All right, thank you, ma'am. But them two right now, right now, they combine forces and just create trouble. And school board member Darrell Jones don't want you over there without his permission, and he wants to know and all like that. I try to avoid all them. Okay, okay. But I want you to know, I will be, with their permission, joining forces to sustain the great work, the erection. And then finally, Mr. Vice Chairman, I might say, we're talking about Title I schools. We're talking about a sociological difference. We're talking about schools that have come up from separate, unequal. We're not talking about bricks and mortar. These are not the places where the freshest new buildings have been built and the most modern and sophisticated technology has been placed. But if it ain't the brand-new bricks and that these are the oldest structures in the school system, what is it? I think you've heard it twice, Ms. Hankerson saying, we love these children. You've heard school board member Jones say, he said it last Thursday at that banquet, he said, we love these children. And I do believe that the transformation- And I do believe that the transformation of children begins with love and caring. It's happening at Rudiger, it's happening at Sable Palm and all these other schools in my district. And it's something to say, Vince, that when you don't have, that every school in a commissioner's district is a Title I school, that says a lot. But notwithstanding the income levels of our families, it does take an entire village to raise a child. And I thank you that you don't allow the flames of poverty to engulf the futures of our children. Love is, and has proven to be, an insulator for protecting the potential of children. And I want to say publicly, I'm so mesmerized by what Mr. Jones has wrought in that district. Mr. Jones continued to, to do what you're doing, our leader, in inspiring and making sure that the school board puts the right supplies, money and resources. And that what your job is and you're doing that and the result are measurable. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I certainly echo Commissioner Proctor's sentiments for Mr. Jones and the school system, but I'd, I just felt like I'd be remiss if I didn't also congratulate Sable Palm and Rudiger for all the hard work that you all have done. I mean, you've just poured your heart and soul into our children. You've elevated their grades and I know you've instilled pride and confidence in them to make them feel that they can do it, they can succeed. And of course, we see it. I see Dr. Michelle Gale was in the audience, Assistant Superintendent. She and all the school board members, we just thank you for all the support that you have given to our schools. And we just look forward to the great things that the students are going to do in the future. But thanks to you all right now, and I think you owe the great deal of our respect, our gratitude and our thanks for all that you do for our children. Thank you.
Commissioner Maddox.
Yeah. I'll be brief. I mean, everybody said everything, that's one thing about going la- or close to last. When Darrell Jones was elected as a school board member, I think we all know that he was elected by beating an incumbent. And we had no idea that, no, I didn't, that he would take the bar of what it means to be a school board member and raise it so high. It is, it's not lost on me that, that my best friend has become the model of what it means to be a school board member here in Leon County. It does not happen without advocacy. It does not happen without investment. What he does on the dais is one thing, but what he does in the community to bring resources back, not due to, not just to his district, but the reason he's standing up there, because he does it for every single Title I school, is the reason those schools have been able to go from the grades they were to the As that they are now. And those principals, if you ask them, are super appreciative. They sing his praises every time they get a chance to talk about what he's done for them. So congratulations on raising that bar. But also, I don't think it, I don't think it not murder to understand too, that the respect he has for his predecessor and the mentorship that she had in him, that he recognizes her every chance he gets as his predecessor and the shoulders that he stands on to be able to raise the bar and do what he's done. And so, congratulations on that. But to the principals, if Coach Norvell had taken our team to a national championship, there'd be parades, there'd be, there'd be a huge bonus, there'd be other teams knocking his door down, trying to get him to come and coach for them. I don't see what you did any less important or any less relevant to our community than that national championship that he would, that he would have won. And the thing about it is, if he had done it, he would have done it with some of the best players in the nation. You've taken children who were made to believe that they weren't the best.
Yep.
And you convinced them.
Right.
That they were just as good as everybody else. And that your schools could be an A just like every other school in this district. That, that is, that is phenomenal coaching. But not only that, you convinced your team, your staff, that they could invest in these children in a way that, that they could create A students. That is, look, man, I, my, my immediate past chair said it, you, you deserve millions. What, what would you do if, if we were able to give you millions to invest into your schools, to invest into your staff? What would that look like? You weren't given, you weren't given easy jobs, but you didn't go in to just maintain what was already there. You didn't go in to go a grade level up. It wasn't like, well, we're gonna try to go from a D to a C just to keep this. No, I believe the only way you get from where you were to where you are right now is that you came in and you came in with the mindset that we're going to be an A. And you preached that to your staff. And even the staff that didn't believe began at some point to buy into what you were teaching and preaching. And the ones that didn't got off the bus.
All right.
And now what you left with is you're left with teachers and students and administrators that believe in what you're doing. And, and the thing is, what I challenge you to is, your leadership, and I've said this to the other principals and, and, and School Board Members Jones's district, your leadership needs to be imitated. It's not what you've done right now for your schools, it's what the leaders that come after you is going to do. What you've done is no good. It's no good if when you leave, that school goes, goes right back to a D or F. Who have you trained to come behind you to take your motto and make sure that those schools remain As? So I'm, I'm congratulating on what you've done today, but I will be just as hard on you as, if, when you decide to take another challenge, that that school goes right back to where it was. You should have a say in what happens next if you decide to move on. You should advocate for who you believe could be, to be the right leader. You should not allow your hard work to go in reverse because we've decided, the district decided, that your talents would be better used transforming in other campuses. So I applaud what you've done, but I challenge you to create more leaders just like you so that when the time comes, they can step up and do exactly what you've done or maintain the As that you've had. And, and School Board Member Jones, you too, you got, you got term limits. You got term limits at school board. What, what good are you if, if you don't have somebody to come behind you that, that you're able to, to, to influence and to, and to give your gravitas to, to bring those resources and advocacy to the districts and, and the Title I schools that you, that you've influenced so heavily? And it's, it's a little bit harder for you because it doesn't just take you having somebody who understands advocacy, it takes you having somebody to come behind you that you're able to get in front of people and give, show them how to get folks to, to invest in your schools the way that you've got them to invest in your schools. And so, I challenge you all. Congratulations, but there's a challenge there that this continues and that we don't ever see our schools be in those districts and those Title I schools be Ds and Fs again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I, I just call out that Commissioner Maddox gives politicians this bad name. You heard him say, "And I will be brief."
Commissioner Proctor, Chairman Cavann said we're using the button system. You weren't in order. Thank you. I'll be, I'll be even briefer. I just want to say congratulations and thank you because various levels of government and agencies do not make your job easy and it only gets harder. And what you do has more of an impact than perhaps what anyone does. The positive grade that we see now impacts all of these students now, all of these families in our community. But when we're all dead and in the ground, those students that you inspired, that you gave confidence, that you made A students, will long be providing, reaping what you are sowing for generations into the future. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Chairman, you're needed back up on the dais. And Commissioner Cummings, I believe you have a proclamation to present.
Commissioner Cummings, thank you also for your service on the Children's Services Council.
I have a proclamation recognizing Nick's Togery for 75 years of service and I would like to invite Mr. Nick Gavallas or anyone from Nick's Togery to please join me. Okay, Mr. Chair, the proclamation reads, "Whereas on June 24th, 1950, Mr. Nick Gavallas opened Nick's Togery as a modest 800-square-foot men's clothing store located on Monroe Street next to the Florida Capitol. Several years later, the store moved to its current location on South Monroe across from the Augustus G. Akins Leon County Courthouse, and today he operates two additional locations, Nick's Big and Tall and the Gallery on Market Street. And whereas for 75 years, Nick's Togery has been a trusted name in our community, selling quality men's apparel, maintaining a strong commitment to excellence, providing personal attention and timely styles to every customer, and exemplifying the highest standards of service and professionalism in men's clothing. And whereas Nick's Togery has dressed generations of men for memorable and important occasions, including weddings, graduations and civic ceremonies. Their distinguished client lists include former Governor Bob Graham, Coach Bobby Bowden, Mr. Lee Corso, Dr. Frederick Humphries, Dr. William P. Foster, and Mr. Garrett Johnson, who was the first Rhodes Scholar from Florida State University. Whereas Nick's Togery has earned many distinguished awards and for 13 years in a row, they were named the Top 100 Men's Stores in the United States by Esquire Magazine." I think we can give a round of applause for that. Year after year, it's received the coveted Tallahassee's Best Title, been named Retailer of the Year by the Florida Retailer Federation, and among the Top 200 Influential People of Tallahassee. And whereas Nick's Togery has made significant contributions to the economic vitality of Leon County and demonstrated a deep dedication to the community and traditions by supporting local causes, events and public service organizations. And whereas Mr. Nick Gavallas, his sons Mike, George and Victor, and his grandsons, are fulfilling his dream of dressing the southeast region with the finest quality clothing and service and playing vital roles in shaping the identity and economic strength of the downtown area. They contributed to the establishment of the Tallahassee Downtown Improvement Authority, the Downtown Merchants Association, the Knits and Vols, and many of them served as dedicated members on the various boards. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida do hereby recognize and commend Nick's Togery on the occasion of its 75th anniversary and extend sincere appreciation for its enduring presence and service that has enriched our community greatly. Day to this 18th day of November, 2025, signed by Chairperson Chairman Welch, signed by all the county commissioners and attested to by a great county administrator. Congratulations."
My brothers Victor, Mike, and representing our third generation of Gavalluses in the family business, Nicholas. I'd like to say thank you for the words. It was a great honor to be up here and share this, but I'd also like to say thank you to you all and commissioners in the past that have made it easy for businesses to succeed in Tallahassee. Because without your leadership, you know, we can't succeed either. So I'd like to talk a little bit about Nick's Togery and how it really came to Tallahassee. My father grew up in Augusta, Georgia, and his father was a master tailor and owned a dry cleaner. So he always had clothing in his background. So he married my mother, which lives in Live Oak, Florida. They married and they lived in Live Oak for several years and he knew he, one day he wanted to open up a men's clothing store. And they worked hard, saved money, and then when the time was right, they were going to make a decision. Where do we go? They knew they weren't going to stay in Live Oak. So there was two decisions. They were going to move to Jacksonville and open up or Tallahassee and open up. So they looked at Jacksonville and they said, "Okay, big city, lots of people, industry, businesses already formed, but it was a very mature city, already established." And he said, "I didn't know, well, can I fit in, can I not?" Then he looked at Tallahassee. He said, "Okay, capital city, that's a great place to be because I knew there would always be important people at the capital or center around the capital." But what really drew him to Tallahassee were the two universities, Florida A&amp;M and Florida State. Because he knew there was lots of young people in this small community and he was young at the time, so he said, "I can grow with my clients. I can grow with the cities. The city grows, I'll grow." And he grew. He opened his store, I was saying, on June 24th, 1950, right across the street. And that day was a hectic day for the Gavallas family. As Dad was opening up this store, you can imagine the anxieties and emotions going on of opening up this business all by himself. At the same time, my mother was in Live Oak giving birth to Mike. So all this was going on when he was trying to open the store. So it was, ended up being a great day. They had a healthy son. Dad comes home, a little disappointed because no one came in the store. Worked all day, excited, but no one showed up. So he's talking to my mom. He said, "Nope, Nick, tomorrow will be a better day." He said, "Okay." So he goes back the next day, opens up, no one comes in. Until about 5:30 that afternoon, he said, a man walks in, so he was excited. "Hey, good morning," or "Good afternoon, how are you doing, you know? Welcome to Nick's, you know, how can I help you?" The man stopped there, looked around and he said, "Y'all have any fishing lures?" And his heart sunk. And as the polite and gracious man that he was, he said, "No, sir, this is a men's clothing store, about plenty of socks and ties if you need that." And goes, "Nope, I really weren't sure what you were. I thought maybe you were sporting goods store." And he left. So he, he goes home that night, talks to my mother, he says, "Janet, I've made a big mistake." She said, "What?" She goes, "We're not going to make it in this business. I've made the wrong decision." And she said, "Nick, yes you are, tomorrow's going to be a better day." And my mother was always right about everything. And she was right about this. Because 75 years later, here we are, a third generation of Gavalluses getting ready to carry on the family business and we couldn't be prouder to be a part of this city and part of Tallahassee's history.
Commissioner O'Keefe, you're recognized.
Mr. Vice Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to say congratulations, especially as, oh, focus on the picture, don't, yeah, that's more important.
It's one good-looking photo. A lot of nice suits in that photo.
I'm always proud when I come to the courthouse and I see your store across the street in the district. And in 2007, when I graduated from FSU, I had never bought a suit before. And I was getting rid of interviews, and I heard y'all sell the good suits, and I had no idea how much a good suit was supposed to cost. And y'all set me out with an incredible first suit, and I realized in my interviews it was a better suit than every CPA firm that sent it to your reviewer. And it's just, the suits I've gotten from you, I really appreciate it. And I'm one of, you forgot to mention myself as one of the distinguished clients. Thank you.
Thank you all to the Gavales family. I just want to say, I know oftentimes we're separated by distance, but I appreciate our longstanding friendship and your commitment to Tallahassee and Leon County and serving our community. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, next, we are going to have a proclamation recognizing the retirement of Ms. Brenda Williams from the Tallahassee Housing Authority. Commissioner Maddox, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proclamation reads, whereas Brenda Williams closes the chapter on 42 years in the housing industry and has served 14 years of that time as the Executive Director of the Tallahassee Housing Authority, demonstrating unwavering commitment to affordable housing, community development, and public service. And whereas during her tenure, the Tallahassee Housing Authority has made significant progress in improving housing conditions, expanding access to quality and affordable housing, and strengthening partnerships with local organizations, stakeholders, and residents. And whereas, under her leadership, the Tallahassee Housing Authority's master redevelopment plan for the Orange Avenue Apartments, calling for increased density and for up to 500 mixed-income units to be developed on a 29-acre site. And whereas she has champion initiatives that have increased the affordability of safe, I'm sorry, the availability of safe, affordable housing options for families, seniors, veterans, and individuals with disabilities. And whereas Brenda Williams' dedication, integrity, and innovative approach has not only enhanced the quality of life for countless individuals, but also set a high standard of excellence in public housing administration in Leon County, St. Louis, Missouri, New Orleans, Louisiana, Camden, New Jersey. And whereas this community deeply appreciates her 14 years of service, visionary leadership, and lasting contribution to the mission and success of the Tallahassee Housing Authority, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners in Leon County, Florida, that we do hereby recognize and congratulate Brenda Williams on her retirement, and applaud her faithful and dedicated service and enduring impact she has made on communities spanning 42 years. It's signed by the commission and attested to by the county administrator. Congratulations.
First of all, I want to thank the commission for this proclamation. I'm very, very grateful to receive it. It feels different standing here today at the podium without my hand out. It feels different. But that being said, I want to thank this commission for all of your commitment, your financial support to not only myself, but to the Tallahassee Housing Authority. Today, I'd like to announce that we submitted an application to the state of Florida for 120 apartments for 62 and over and the disabled. The application, we believe, is going to be very competitive, in part due to the financial commitment that this commission has made to the third phase of Columbia Gardens. So it is a lottery, but it's a very, very competitive application. So cross your fingers and pray that we are awarded tax credits. And on behalf of the Tallahassee Housing Authority, the residents, and the Board of Commissioners, we appreciate your support over the years and your continued support for affordable housing in Leon County. Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, Ms. Williams, you know, you have made an indelible mark in Leon County for the 14 years that you have been here. We just appreciate all the work you have done for affordable housing. You have really blessed so many families here in this community, and I personally would miss you once you retire, and I know the community will miss you as well. But just thank you for the positive impact that you have played here in Leon County. And we certainly wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Madder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Williams, I just want to thank you for everything you've done for this community. You are a treasure, and the impact that you've had on this community, I think, will be felt for many, many years. Many of the recipients of your hard work may never know it was you, but that's not why we're in the business, right?
Right.
So thank you for everything that you do. God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Welch?
Ms. Williams, just wanted to echo those sentiments. Thank you so much for a career dedicated to helping people in our community who need it the most. You, your legacy will endure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mike, thank you. This is heartfelt. I love Ms. Williams. It's easy to do. When a person's walk exceeds their talk, you can respect that. And a few years ago, school board member Darryl Jones called me, I believe, the weekend that she arrived, and I don't know how Darryl knew you and whatnot, but he said, get down here, I'm having something, and we're going to welcome the new Housing Authority Director of Tallahassee. It was a Sunday afternoon, beautiful, and we gathered, and she ain't say that much, so I ain't think she was going to do that much. And she proved me wrong from the initial perception, and it's hard to get a conversation going with Brenda because she don't talk that. Brenda has brought, under her leadership, Orange Avenue, Springfield, Lake Bradford Road, 448 new units of affordable housing in District One. And to anyone in these times of challenge, of governmental, extraordinary governmental pushback against poor people, she has continued to forge and lead the way to be a beacon light of hope and possibility. 448 units, new units, contemporary, modernizing the district in its housing component. I'm deeply, I'm richly, we are all grateful for her services. And Brenda, I don't care what they say about Nick Maddox, you are right with me.
All right, Commissioners, I believe that wraps up our proclamations. And Mr. County Administrator, do we have any citizens to be heard on consent and non-agenda items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two speaker cards in on consent and non-agenda items. And this first is Brent, or sorry, Brett Dennis.
My name is Brett Dennis. My address is 6869 Proctor Road in Leon County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My family owns Ashley Pyrotechnics, our local fireworks company that has served Leon County and the surrounding area for 25 years now. My father, Craig Dennis, has been an attorney here for four decades, and both my sister, Jessica Pafford, and myself grew up right here in the community. I'm here today because Item 13 on your consent agenda addresses a recent interpretation of county policy that has created uncertainty about whether professionally permitted fireworks displays can take place in county parks. While caution is encouraged when dealing with fireworks, hiring a professional is always the best answer. If you've been to an event in Leon County in the last 20 years that has had fireworks, it has likely been me and my family doing it. When the team runs out on the field at Doak Campbell Stadium, that's us. On New Year's, at Cascades Park, when we do the fireworks for New Year's, that's us. I would encourage you to support Consent Agenda Item 13 as it provides the most clear path forward for fireworks in Leon County. About five years ago, I was approached by somebody from Visit Tallahassee at a golf tournament, who was working on trying to bring the Cross Country World Championships to Tallahassee. He simply asked me if I thought fireworks would be possible. Since that time, we have worked with Visit Tallahassee to produce dozens of sporting events that have had fireworks to celebrate their winners and to encourage organizers to hold their events in Tallahassee. Fireworks add something special to community events. They bring families together. They create memories. They help turn local festivals, holiday celebrations, and nonprofit fundraisers into something people want to come back to year after year. We have safely produced hundreds of shows in Leon County without incident, and we take that responsibility very seriously. Item 13 will help my local business, supports community events, and maintains the high level of safety and professionalism expected by this board and our residents. Thank you for your time, and I urge you to support the item.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our speakers.
Mr. County Administrator, do we have any, do we have any pulled items?
We have two pulled items, Items Number 11 and Item Number 12, pulled by Chairman Caban.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to accept staff recommendation on consent items moved by Commissioner Maddox and second by Commissioner Proctor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item, Mr. County Administrator?
Item Number 11 and Items 12, Commissioner, both seek your permission to schedule the first and only public hearing regarding the intent to utilize the uniform method of collection for the purposes of sewer services imposed on septic sewer projects consistent with Florida statutes. Again, these are both to schedule the first and only public hearings on these items. We have no speakers and are recommending Options 1 on both items.
Thank you. Commissioners, do I see a motion for staff recommendation? Just a move by Commissioner Maddox, second by Commissioner O'Keefe. Any discussion? Commissioner Proctor?
The charges related to sewer service would be imposed on certain real property. What does that mean? Real property and not to property owners? Does it add to the bottom line value of a property? Goes to the tax base? What does that say?
These are the typical non-ad valorem assessments that we impose on all of our septic-to-sewer projects as soon as the city is ready, as soon as they are constructed and the city is ready to accept those sewers to septic projects onto their system. These are people who do not have an electric meter, so they require us to collect those charges, those month-to-month charges on the non-ad valorem assessment or on the property tax bill. Again, this is consistent with all of our septic-to-sewer agreements with the city of Tallahassee.
So is this a lien upon the properties?
This is a method of collection.
Okay. All right. And it'll come back to us on December 9th? Okay.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just have a question for the county administrator, if I may. I know we've been involved with this septic-to-sewer project down in that particular area, but is this the first time? This is not the first time that this has come up. We have completed other services in that area. Am I correct, Mr. County Administrator?
That is correct.
And this is just another segment that has been completed that we have to give authorization for?
That's correct.
Collection for it. That's all. I just needed that clarification.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, with one other inquiry. We have, in some instances, grants to transition property owners to connect to sewer. Do those grants, are they widely applied specifically to areas? And if I remember correctly, everybody may not be subsidized to transition from septic to sewer. And on the ninth, Ms. County Administrator, if you could share for us that perspective of the differences of who gets in and who does not?
Yes, and let me just say very quickly, just to answer that question, all of these properties fully utilize those grants. There are no, there are no charges to individuals for this. It has a value of over $10,000 per household.
That's why I was concerned, Mr. Chairman, with what was a lien being placed, what was being charged and assessed, because from our understanding, these people's way is being paid upfront, so.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All right, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, or, I mean, next item, Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, that brings us to the general business agenda and Agenda Item Number 17, which seeks the board's approval of the ratification of the actions taken at your workshop on the 2026 state and federal legislative priorities. We're recommending Options 1 and 2, and we have no speakers on this item.
Just real quick point of order, Commissioners. Mr. County Administrator, I think we skipped item that we pulled.
12.
12.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. I introduced them both at the same time.
All good. I know they're very similar in nature.
That's right.
So Commissioners, I'm going to go ahead and look for a staff recommendation for Item 12.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Maddox, second by Commissioner Welch. I'll go ahead and take the vote. No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm nay, so motion passes 6-1. All right.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. Again, Item Number 17 seeks the board's ratifications of the workshop of the 2026 state and federal legislative priorities. We're recommending Options 1 and 2. We have no speakers on this item. So moved.
Second.
All right, staff, staff recommendation?
Yes.
1 and 2. Okay. Moved by Commissioner Welch, second by Commissioner Maddox. Before we get into discussion, Commissioners, I want to say this. At 5:50 with three minutes, I am going to take a 10-minute recess before the public hearings. So if there's, if there's, if there's a lot of Commissioner discussion, I'm happy to come back to this after the public hearing. I just want to go ahead and let everyone know where we are on this item. Commissioner Madder, I saw you in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm actually, I put myself in the queue for Number 18.
Number 18, okay. Commissioner Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, the Farm Share, I understand, has not received legislative funding. Indeed, our county has entered into an agreement with Farm Share. And as we're looking at the approval of our legislative ask, I'm seeking to add Farm Share as a part of the effort to secure.
Commissioner Welch, will you amend your motion to have Farm Share added as a legislative priority?
Sure.
Commissioner Maddox, will you maintain your second? Okay.
Thank you.
Good. All right, Commissioners, we're going to take this to a vote.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you a question. Add in Farm Share, do we have an associated number, or do we need an associated amount to include it in the?
Can we amend that? I mean, find out and then whatever we're asking? I mean, that.
Is that what we, can I ask, Mr.?
Sure. So we would just support their appropriations request at whatever the amount is?
Oh.
And might I note, they had a 28% fall off in the recent failure for SNAP benefits to get distributed and blah, blah. It really impacted our food giveaway. Commissioner Caban and Sheriff MacNeil and I sponsored this past Saturday. There was no protein available, which normally is, but the 28% decrease in funding has hurt.
So as a follow-up, so how would that work, Mr. County Administrator? So as a follow-up, so how would that work, Mr. County Administrator? It would just be added on our list?
It would be upon your approval, we've added that the county would assist other community partners in endeavors in the past, and so it would be consistent with that action.
Commissioner Minner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to see if we could accept a felony amendment to add my old alma mater to this, Second Harvest of the Big Bend, as well, so that we have not only Farm Share as a policy priority of ours, but also Second Harvest of the Big Bend, for the same reason.
No problem.
Except it's been seconded by Commissioner Maddox. I'm in favor of this. I've seen that both of those organizations have done phenomenal work in our community the last few weeks, and happy to support them. All right, Commissioners, so we'll take it to the vote. I see no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimous. Next item, Mr. County Administrator, do we have any speakers on Item 18?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have several speakers on this item and a brief staff presentation, so I'll defer to you.
Perfect. All right, Commissioners, so we'll take a 10-minute recess, come back at 6 for the public hearing, and then we'll come back after the public hearings on Item Number 18.